Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Pinellas County School Board Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I call this meeting to order. We will begin this morning with an invocation by Father David Gould of Saint Thomas Episcopal Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Caprice Edman, and the National Anthem performed by Osceola High School's Oasis under the direction of Dean Labor. Please rise and continue standing until the completion of the National Anthem. Father Gould, good morning.
Good morning. Most gracious God, in you we live and move and have our being. We pray you so to guide and govern us by your Holy Spirit, that in all the cares and occupations of our lives, we may not forget you, but may remember that we are ever walking in your sight. We pray especially today for this body and the individuals that make up this Pinellas County School Board. We ask that you help each member to remain focused on the well-being of children and their education and all the decisions that they need to make today. We thank you for the opportunity to have deep and respectful conversations and to have clear eyes for the discernment of your will. You are the Alpha and Omega, and in your most holy name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My heavens, what a beautiful performance. Thank you so much for leavening all of us with your voices and with that spirit this morning. It was really beautiful. And with that elevation, I do also just want to take a personal point of privilege here and kind of reintroduce Father David Gould again. He's actually recently the new Assistant Rector at Saint Thomas Episcopal Church where my family has long attended church. And he was just ordained within the last year. He was our seminarian and then ordained, and it was really a privilege, it is a privilege, to have been through that process and celebrate that with you. And I'm grateful for you accepting the calling, and I'm grateful for you being here this morning. So, thank you, Father Gould. The next item on our agenda today is our video. And, you know, we've had a lot to celebrate. A lot happened in the last week, and we have a lot to celebrate. And I'm sure we'll hear about some of that in various comments during discussion time. But we decided to share a video called Rise, which highlights the career growth path that is available in Pinellas County schools through Kirk Gilner and our Transportation Department. Let's take a look.
Anything that breaks, we fix here. Pinellas County has about a thousand buses, and they also have two hundred-some cars and trucks.
Engine won't run right if it's clogged up.
I'm Kirk Gilner. I've worked here for eleven years, and now I'm a diesel mechanic. I started off as a bus driver, and I drove there for about a year. And then I became a multi-trades worker, and I moved on past there and became a tire guy, and now I'm a mechanic.
We might need the twenty-seven millimeter.
I like the flexibility, having off all the holidays. I can spend that with my kids and my family. We've been using the buses. We got electric buses, and I was the first person to introduce them to everybody. And anybody who needs to drive them, they come and find me, and I explain to them what the difference is between electric, or diesel, or propane. In the future, I'm hoping to become more of a lead technician or foreman, and just keep growing. Pinellas County is a great place to work for, and if you want to start in on entry level, and you can excel from there.
The next item on our agenda today, item one point six, Introduction of Professional and Community Organization Representatives. Our Public Affairs Officer, Isabel Mascherinas.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hendrick and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Lee Bryant, President. Representing the North Pinellas League of Women Voters, Debbie Entrikin and Jean Reynolds. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome Rachel Eaton and Ethan Kiefer from Osceola Fundamental High School, and their Principal Mike Bonet.
Good morning, Rachel and Ethan. We're glad you could be here. Mr. Bonet, it's nice to see you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Hendrick and staff. It is our pleasure to present the Student Rights and Responsibilities Committee Report for Osceola Fundamental High School. My name is Rachel Eaton, and I'm a senior at Osceola.
Good morning. I'm Ethan Kiefer, and I'm also a senior at Osceola Fundamental High School.
I want to start by thanking our Journalism and News class at Osceola for providing such great photos to use in the presentation. Osceola is a school that runs off of warrior pride. Pride stands for Preparation, Responsibility, Integrity, Discipline, and Enthusiasm. From our great success, it is apparent that our school and students follow these guidelines. Osceola has many great achievements. For example, Osceola was ranked number one among high schools in Pinellas County, number forty-four in the Tampa Metro area, number fifty-five in the state of Florida, and number eight-hundred-ninety-two nationally out of seventeen thousand nine-hundred-one schools, according to the U.S. News and World Report's twenty-five, twenty-six best high schools. Osceola is the only full fundamental high school in the state. We've been an A-school for thirteen years and had a ninety-nine percent graduation rate in the year two thousand twenty-five. We also offer twenty-five-plus AP courses and industry-recognized certifications, and have nine district champion teams. Additionally, this year I participated in Saint Petersburg Sister Cities, and I was lucky enough to welcome three Japanese student ambassadors from Takamatsu, Japan, as well as go-to-Takamatsu myself. Osceola gladly hosted these students for a school day and contributed to global interconnectivity. Osceola also has a wide variety of varsity sports, including girls' flag football and boys' and girls' bowling. But today, I'm going to highlight some of our most successful programs in the past few years. This past year, varsity boys' tennis took home the three-eight FHSAA triple-state champion title. Additionally, team member Alessandra DeBernardo was picked for the Mr. Tennis Award given by the state of Florida, and he is also ranked nineteenth in the state and committed full ride to Florida Southern College. Another standout tennis player is Lila Messler. She was a champion of the state in her freshman year of high school and is verbally committed to play D-one tennis at the University of Illinois. This past year, the girls' softball team also made it to the state semifinals, and altogether, the school had fifteen-plus committed athletes. I participate in varsity girls' basketball myself, and I'm filled with pride at the tremendous growth our team has had in just one year, doubling our wins from the prior season. It is clear both academics and athletics excel at Osceola. At Osceola, myself, I've participated in more than ten clubs, including a service club called Osceola Cares that I founded. I've played varsity basketball for four years and been a captain for two, and I've taken sixteen amazing AP classes while at Osceola. I hope to attend William &amp; Mary in the fall and major in Integrative Conservation. Thank you.
Osceola has fifty clubs, which supports student bonding and foster community between the classes of Osceola. Clubs such as Muafah Theta, Real Kappa, and Science Honor Society will allow our upperclassmen to tutor our lowerclassmen on various core subjects such as calculus, biology, and world history. Other clubs, such as National Honor Society and an IRAC club, offer our students the opportunity to volunteer at neighboring elementary schools, local institutions, and run donation drives, as well as a blood drive conducted by Science Honor Society. Other clubs, such as Best Buddies, Women in STEM, and Guys Read, help tie the bridge between all of our students, building new relationships, friendships, and building a better environment. Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, is one of Osceola's greatest and most successful clubs. FBLA offers students a variety of interactions, projects, and nationwide competitions that allow them to develop the leadership skills they will need to be effective members of the business industry. As a result, many of our members at Osceola have found great success in the club. Along with the over sixty people who moved on to state competitions, we also had three people placed at national competitions. Suriya Badapati placed ninth in healthcare administrations, while Michaela Preble and Tara Todorowick placed second in social media strategies. And Osceola, FBLA, is ran under the CTED program. CTED stands for Center of Technology, Entertainment, and Design, and includes many different kinds of classes related to business. Some of these career pathways include entrepreneurship, digital design, sports marketing, and digital media, whereas the digital media pathway operates the daily live morning announcements broadcast that I anchor on and help produce. Students can also take many different certification tests in these courses. CTED falls under Osceola's extensive CAPE program, which stands for Career and Program Education. Other than CTED, the subprograms within CAPE include Culinary Arts and PIMA. Our Culinary Arts Culinary and Baking Program is state and nationally ranked, while PIMA, which stands for Pre-Engineering and Manufacturing Academy, allows our students to take four years of quality engineering courses that engage the students in activities revolving around mechanical, electrical, and industrial engineering. While I also served as a CTED ambassador, I'm also a member in math, science, and social studies honor societies, as well as numerous other clubs, such as FBLA. I moved on to states in the digital video competition. I'm a second-year varsity wrestler, and my plans are to attend UF, or FSU, and major in digital media production.
In short, Osceola provides its students with the perfect environment for them to thrive in. Osceola Pride, which is once again Preparation, Responsibility, Integrity, Discipline, and Enthusiasm, is the blueprint that makes our school what it is.
Our students' dedication to their academics, athletics, and extracurriculars have led us to achieving many things, from nationwide awards to a thriving school community. And as we continue to push these key principles of pride forward, we hope to continue on our path to build a better place for our students to learn, grow, and socialize. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Can I come to Osceola, Mr. Bonet? Is there an age restriction? I'd like to attend. It was fantastic. Rachel and Ethan, thank you for being here. And thank you for being leaders at your school. You make these things happen for everyone. Well done. Well done. Item two on our agenda today, amendments to the agenda. Mr. Hendrick, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are three amendments. Item eight point three, request approval of the tentative agreement with the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association. Item eight point four, request approval of negotiated agreement with SEIU, Florida Public Services Union. And item eight point five, request approval of the salary increase for non-represented support staff. Several of these groups took their ratification vote yesterday until last night, and we received it and asked the board for approval today.
Thank you. Those amendments are noted. Board members, are there any other amendments to the agenda? No. As Board Chair, I find good cause to amend the agenda suggested by Mr. Hendrick. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended? Motion from Mrs. Long, and a second from Mrs. Meyer. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. The special order agenda today, item four point one, we're going to have recognition of school bus drivers with safe driving records. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, Madam Chair. As you saw in the video, some of the work that goes on behind the scenes to keep our buses ready to be on the roads, but once they get on to one of the most populated and densest counties in the country, they have to stay safe. And today, we'd like to recognize some of our drivers who have outstanding records of safe driving service. And here to do so is Team Mark Haggawood, our Director of Transportation. Mr. Haggawood?
Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board members, Mr. Hendrick and staff. Pinellas County Schools is proud to have highly trained and dedicated school bus drivers who safely transport our students to and from school each day. School bus drivers also serve as mentors and are often the first people that students see in the morning and the last district employee that they see in the evening. PCS is pleased to recognize forty-one school bus drivers who have demonstrated over ten years of safe driving. Eleven of those forty-one bus drivers have over twenty years, and one driver has thirty-two years of safe driving. The school bus drivers are not with us today because they're finishing their routes, but we're going to be having a Safe Driver Luncheon on November thirteenth, and we hope you can all attend. Thank you.
Thank you. That luncheon is great. I'm going to check my calendar and try to be there. I recommend everyone does. That's incredible. Thank you for being here this morning. Team Mark, board members, any comments? No? Thank you. We really appreciate it. My kids take the bus every day to and from.
I hope it's on time.
And so, you want to talk about that? No, I'm just joking. It is on time. It's been amazing. I'm so grateful. Yes, thank you. And certainly for the safety. We're all grateful for the safety. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item four point two, request adoption of proclamation recognizing School Bus Safety Week. May I have a motion and a second to make this proclamation? Motion for Mrs. Peters, second, Mrs. Kane. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In addition to recognizing our bus drivers, we'd like to do the proclamation for School Bus Safety Week. Mr. Haggawood, take it away.
Pinellas County Schools joins all states and school districts nationwide in observing National School Bus Safety Week, October twentieth through twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. The two thousand twenty-five theme this year is Safety First, Safety Always. Sponsored by the National Association of Pupil Transportation, this campaign emphasizes safe transportation of all students. The district proudly recognizes our dedicated school bus drivers who transport over twenty-one thousand students each day, morning and evening, and this is a great opportunity for parents, students, teachers, motorists, and community members to come together and emphasize the importance of school bus safety. Designed with safety in mind, featuring flashing lights, large mirrors, stop arms, and the iconic yellow paint, school buses are recognized to be the safest vehicles on the road. PCS Transportation Department has several activities planned during School Bus Safety Week. You'll see a yellow school bus keychain on your desk this morning. Hopefully, that will remind you of the three hundred and five school buses that we have running around each day, going over thirty thousand miles just in Pinellas County. Please join us in celebrating our school bus drivers in Pinellas County and across the United States during this important week. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Edman, would you please read the proclamation?
National School Bus Safety Week. Whereas, the health and safety of all students are essential to the happiness and well-being of the families, teachers, and communities. And whereas, students are seventy times more likely to get to school safely when taking a bus instead of traveling by car. And whereas, school buses provide the most, and sometimes only, reliable form of transportation to and from school, which promotes attendance and punctuality, and encourages better student achievement. And whereas, motorists must remember to stop when a school bus has stopped with its stop arms extended and red lights flashing. And whereas, school bus transportation employees should be recognized for their diligence in safely transporting the schoolchildren of Pinellas County, Florida. And whereas, local organizations are encouraged to support student and traffic safety activities associated with National School Bus Safety Week, and everyone is reminded to keep a watchful eye for students going to and from school, and to take extra precautions around students and school buses. Now, therefore, the Pinellas County School Board hereby recognizes October twentieth through twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as National School Bus Safety Week. Signed this fourteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. School Board members, any discussion? Mrs. Long?
I just want to say thank you. You know, I've noticed that it's got to be a hundred percent better, because I have received no emails or calls, and I watch the bus drivers. I watch them going through my neighborhood, and they're just, they do such a great job. I don't know how they do it. I would not be able to even go a quarter of a mile with a bus of kids. So, thank you for all you and the drivers do.
It is nice having enough school bus drivers.
Yes, it is. Ms. Edman?
I was going to say, my comments regarding their Certificate of Distinction, but it's worth saying right now that thirty-seven of our bus drivers earned their COD one or COD two and were recognized yesterday. So, thank you to our bus drivers for continuing your professional development, as well as to you and your team, Mr. Hendrick. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item four point two. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you for being here, Team Mark. Item five, public comments on agenda item. Mrs. Hauch, do we have any speakers?
Madam Chair, there are no speakers for agenda items.
Thank you. We don't have anything under unfinished business today. Item seven, the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Motion from Mrs. Long, and a second from Mrs. Kane. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. On our non-consent agenda, item eight point one, setting a public hearing and authorizing the advertisement of the public hearing to consider the amendments to Policies two-four-two-three dot zero one, Career and Professional Education, five-five-zero-zero dot zero seven, Code of Student Conduct, Discipline, and eight-four-zero-five, School Safety. This is the first reading. May I have a motion and a second to approve this item? Motion from Mrs. Kane, and a second from Mrs. Meyer. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we discussed at a recent workshop, all three policies are being updated as a result of changes to state law. And here to give us more information about that is our Director of Strategic Planning and Policy, Leana Eisen. Mrs. Eisen?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Hendrick, staff, and community. Each year, the district reviews our policies in alignment with state legislation and the Florida State Board of Education rules updates, as well as our district and state practices. So, the proposed amendments to the policies today align with this year's updates. The first is twenty-four-twenty-three point oh-one, Career and Professional Education. This policy is reviewed in alignment with House Bill eleven forty-five, and the amendments really just streamline the policy as much of the policy restated law. In Policy fifty-five-hundred point oh-seven, Code of Student Conduct, Discipline, the section on wireless communication devices was amended in alignment with House Bill eleven oh-five, and that restricts the use of wireless communication devices in elementary and middle schools during the school day. The last policy today is eighty-four oh-five, School Safety, and this policy is updated in alignment with Senate Bill fourteen seventy. And the School Safety Policy Amendment adds the requirement for after-action reports following emergency drills. The second reading for these three policies is scheduled for December.
Thank you, Mrs. Eisen. School Board members, any discussion? We held discussion and reviewed these policies in our workshop, as Mr. Hendrick mentioned. With that, we have a motion and a second to approve item eight point one. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Item eight point two, on the non-consent agenda, request approval of the annual district safety and security report for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. May I have a motion and a second to approve this item? Motion from Ms. Blacksburg, and a second from Mrs. Peters. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. State law changed two years ago, requiring a report to the board and to the public on an annual basis in a public meeting on school safety and security. This is the second year now that we've presented this report, and the first year that it also includes all of the information from the quarterly visits from the Office of Safe Schools that started to be presented to the board quarterly last year. And so here to give us more details on the report is our Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Sean Joel. Mr. Joel?
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick and staff, good morning. It's my privilege to present to you today the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five District Annual Safety and Security Report. As Superintendent Hendrick said, this report is mandatory, not be compiled and presented to use the school board and the public each year. If I may, I'd like to just present a few of the items within the report. First and foremost is the completion, implementation, and the integration of our Syntegix Crisis Alert Badge Program. This program started back in the beginning of the summer. With your approval, your input, and your guidance, I'm pleased to say that we were successfully able to implement this program before the start of the academic year. I'm pleased to say that we were successfully able to implement this program before the start of the academic year. One of the greatest outcomes of this particular program, not only is it an additional provision within our security portfolio, is that we were able to train our 13,000-plus district employees, provide them with that Crisis Alert Badge, but even more importantly, to provide them the awareness and the ability to alert their students and staff on any one of our 132 sites if a critical incident was occurring, allowing our students and staff to seek refuge, safe areas, safe corners that they've been trained, and at the same time, alerting and initiating a law enforcement response to that particular area to provide the support and resources they need. So, it is a significant technological addition that we've added to our portfolio. I would be remiss if I did not publicly thank our safety and security team, all the administrators, their assistant principals, our staff, our area superintendents, for the support, and yes, the patience to pull this program through. And I fully believe because of this effort, we are that much safer and prepared as a district for the safety and security of our students and staff. The next part of the report, one of the ones I'd like to highlight, is the preparation with the revisions to this legislation this past year. The state of Florida, FDOE, and the Office of Safe Schools made it mandatory that from a threat management perspective, reporting requirements had to be reported to a statewide portal. All 67 districts now have to report threat management meetings, minutes, activities, and inputs into this portal. Our district threat management team, our coordinator, and again, the support of our administrators, our area superintendents, and everybody, were able to complete, and I'm happy to say this before the deadline, the training for the Florida Model both Day 1 and Day 2, the refresher training, and the training of how to properly input this critical data that we share amongst all the districts across the state now, from all of our school-based threat management teams. So, that's close to 500 Core Four members, our principals, our assistant principals, and even our law enforcement members with our district police department have been fully trained within this portfolio. So, I'm proud to say that. The last one I'd like to speak to is last year, and we're just getting to start this year, actually this week. The Office of Safe Schools conducted 59 site visits to our campuses to include both public and charter. From those site visits, there were some discrepancies found, as it was last year, and I report that these discrepancies were mostly administrative, documentation, new procedures that were requested or mandated to fulfill. Those were brought to our attention by the assessors of the Office of Safe Schools. We were able to remediate, educate, and provide our schools what they needed to ensure that they were compliant, and we continue to move forward with that. I would like to say, though, our relationship with the Office of Safe Schools continues to grow and be strong as we work together to ensure that our educators, our staff, are fully aware of what the requirements are by state statute and that we maintain a compliant district. But more importantly, we are continuing to provide what we have to provide to our administrators to ensure that we have a safe and secure campus, but it's also a welcoming and a respectful learning environment for our students. And I thank you for your support on that. That concludes my report, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you for that thorough report, Mr. Joel. Board members, discussion? Ms. Edmund?
Thank you and your team very much for providing this information to the Board, as well as ensuring that we are compliant. Even when there are areas of improvement, the district is working hard to make sure that those areas are addressed. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Again, thank you for that report, and certainly the work that you and your team do every day. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item 8.2. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Item 8.3, Request Approval of the Tentative Agreement with the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, PCTA. May have a motion and a second to approve this item? A motion from Mrs. Long and a second from Ms. Edmund. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce this item?
It would be my pleasure, Madam Chair. As you see in the item, certainly the contract pay increases, but also all of the contract language that took place this year is all listed in there for the Board and the public. But here to give an overview of the agreement with PCTA is our Chief Human Resources Officer, Mr. Vigyu.
Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Hendrick and Staff. We are pleased to bring to you the tentative agreement with the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association. A special thanks to Union President Lee Bryant and his team for their productive collaboration during the process, which included contract open book, healthcare, and salary negotiations. Ratified yesterday, or late yesterday evening, the agreement includes a total average salary increase of 8.92%, which is inclusive of the referendum, the MOU bonus, and a 1% increase from the operating budget retroactive to July 1st, 2025. MOU to provide two additional non-recurring payments of $300 for full-time employees in the bargaining unit, $300 paid on December 12th, 2025, and an additional $300 paid on May 29th, 2026. Healthcare plan changes, which will take effect on January 1st, 2026, and updates to over 20 contract language articles. The salary increases retroactive to July 1st will be realized in the employee's October 31st paycheck. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Vigyu. Board members, comments? I know that this was a very thorough process, and looking at the number of items that were addressed. Thank you for the open discussions. And this is, you know, one of the three items that we added to the agenda today. All three have to do with negotiating agreements with the various employee bargaining units, and this is the first one, so there's more to come. But I just wanna say, I appreciate the collaboration and discussion and the work it takes to get here. Ms. Edmund?
Thank you. And, uh, Mrs. Hind, you just said everything I was gonna say, so, uh, that's it. But just to echo some of the things Mrs. Hind said, we know that this was not easy to get to this point. We also know that we have legal obligations as it relates to teacher funds. And knowing that this was an open book year, to see this many articles addressed, kudos to both sides, both teams. As a former union member and advocate for teachers, it's really great to see some of these articles included. So, thank you both.
Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I agree with everything that was already said by Ms. Hind and Ms. Edmund. But I also wanna thank, um, you know, all of our teachers, staff, board members, and superintendent especially, who advocated for the referendum, which helped us get the funds. I know it was right after the storms, and it was very uncertain as to whether, you know, how that vote was gonna go by the people. I appreciate the fact that the people had the choice to, to do that, keep that money local. We were able to not just give our teachers raises, but also support staff this year for the first time. So, um, I just wanted to highlight as well just how many people that worked for the district also helped advocate for the referendum to help get that support for our teachers and staff. So, thank you very much for all of the hard work that was done by all the parties involved.
Well said, and thank you. With that, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item 8.3. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Item 8.4, Request Approval of Negotiated Agreement with the SEIU Florida Public Services Union, FPSU. May have a motion and a second to approve item 8.4. Motion from Mrs. Kane and a second from Ms. Edmund. Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you. I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Vigyu for this agreement as well. Mr. Vigyu?
An agreement has also been reached and ratified with SEIU, the Florida Public Services Union. Thank you to Ryan Riley and his team for partnering with us through the healthcare and salary negotiations. Included in the agenda item is an average salary increase of 11.98%, which is inclusive of the referendum, the bonus, MOU bonus, and a 1% increase from the operating budget retroactive to July 1st, 2025. The MOU is to provide two additional non-recurring payments totaling $300 for full-time employees in the bargaining unit, $150 paid on December 19th, 2025, and an additional $150 paid on May 22nd, 2026. Healthcare plan changes, which will also take effect on January 1st, 2026, and an update to Article 22 to align language to our existing practice for uniform replacement. Salary increases retroactive to July 1st will be realized in the employee's November 7th paycheck. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Vigyu. Board members, any discussion on 8.4? Probably just echo, echo the same as the last. Thank you. 11.9%. Again, thank you to the voters of Pinellas County. It's long overdue and well-deserved, so thank you. With that, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item 8.4. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Item 8.5, Request Approval of the Salary Increase for Non-Represented Support Staff. May have a motion and a second to approve this item? Motion from Mrs. Kane and a second from Ms. Edmund. Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this group, we often get asked, who is the non-represented support staff? So, these are principals, secretaries, cafeteria managers, those who supervise other support staff but are not in the union. And so, with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Vigyu for an explanation.
Thank you. If approved, non-represented employees will receive an average salary increase of 9.6%, inclusive of the referendum, the MOU bonus, of two non-recurring payments totaling $300, $150 paid on December 19th, 2025, and an additional $150 paid on May 22nd, 2026, and a 1% increase from the operational budget retroactive to July 1st, 2025. The salary increases retroactive to July 1st will be realized in the employee's November 7th, 2025 paycheck. And thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Board members, discussion? Ms. Edmund?
I just have a question. Um, so the non-represented, they are like our principals who support administrative staff? I just wanna be clear.
Principals, secretaries, cafeteria managers, so they are support staff themselves who supervise other support staff, but they're not in the union. We have not brought forward yet the administrator and PTS recommendation.
Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve item 8.4. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Speaking of those additional employees, Mr. Hendrick, we have two more bargaining units. Would you give us an update where we are on those?
Be happy to. There are two bargaining units that we're still working with. I'll actually ask Mrs. Woodford. She's been our lead negotiator on all of these to give an update on both units.
Thank you. FOP, which is our union that represents our police force, we most recently met on October 7th, and we were successfully able to reach an agreement of an average salary increase of 7.43%. We've been advised by their council that they'll be voting next Tuesday. So, with that, we will, once it's successfully ratified, we will be bringing that to you on October 28th for your approval. The last union is PESPA. They represent our campus monitors, our paraprofessionals, MBAs, nurses, that group. We met on, the last time we met was September 29th. We were prepared to present a salary increase proposal. They chose not to hear that proposal because they requested to open the book for discussion. Just for your information, we did most recently open, have open book in 2024. So, it was just last done a year ago. At the earliest, PESPA's leadership's not able to meet again with us until early November. So, um, with that timeline, if bonuses are negotiated, it, payments may be delayed until after the holidays, but it is our goal to move forward as quickly as possible, because obviously, we wanna get money to our employees timely.
Mrs. Woodford, but do you know approximately how many employees PESPA represents?
I do. 2,200?
Twenty, little over 2,100.
2,100.
And so, they have not started receiving any increase in salary since the July 1 referendum. Is that a true statement?
No, that's not true. The referendum began. The additional amount, or the bonus, or the, any extra percent, we have not been able to negotiate yet.
Okay, so everyone began July 1 with the referendum, and then this is the, the rest of the negotiations coming through. Okay, my heart stopped for a minute, 'cause I thought that is a lot of people waiting on a significant increase. Okay. It's still, like to get it done.
Absolutely. And the bonuses, we're trying to time at really impactful periods, right before the holidays and right before summer vacation. So, we're, we're trying to meet the needs of all our employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, other discussion on this topic? I think, again, it just can't go overstated. Because this came up again, it's on our agenda. I guess we'll have the other two come at some point, but that 8.92%, 11.9%, 9.6%, 7.43%, and I, I don't recall exactly the percent of actual increase we received from the state government in terms of public education funding this year, but I believe it was less than 1%.
It was 0.7?
0.7. So, we had 0.7% increase from the state in education funding this year, and we're able to give these only because the voters in Pinellas County care about and wanna invest in their schools vis-à-vis our employees. And so, I'm immensely grateful, immensely grateful for them. Okay. Next item on our agenda today. It's New Business. Item 9.1, Items Introduced by the Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I wanna thank the Board for your participation in the October 2nd ribbon-cutting across the street at the Dr. Michael A. Grego Leadership Institute. Thank you, Ms. Hind and Ms. Edmund, for sharing words on behalf of the Board and the Board for being there. Also, wanna thank former Florida Speaker of the House, Chris Sprouse, who came and attended and spoke and talked about Dr. Grego there as well. It was a great day, and I wanna thank the community that came out to support that as well. Just the other day, we announced our 2025-26 Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year, Principal Christie James of Ponce de León Elementary School, and Assistant Principal Brooke Crandall of Madeira Beach Fundamental K-8 School. We have a little video that we'd like to show announcing the two winners. Ms. Crandall, I'm gonna need you to come with me, please, if you don't mind. Ms. Crandall, I have a very important announcement. Pinellas County Schools has named you as the Assistant Principal of the Year. Congratulations! We have some folks here to celebrate with you. Take a walk, take a walk, take a walk! Ms. Crandall, congratulations. You've been selected as the Pinellas County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year. You have all of your students, teachers, faculty, some family here. What do you think about the recognition?
I am in amazement. I truly, truly am. It took me by surprise as I was in a meeting, and I am so blessed to be here with all these people who have made my job so easy with these amazing students and the most dynamic staff that we have here at Madeira. So, I am truly blessed in more ways than one.
We are so proud of you, and we all know it's been about a year, and a lot has happened since then. But this recognition is the result of really years and years of great work by you. I know you have a great staff here. I know you have great students. What about them inspires you each day?
Well, when these kiddos come in the door each day, they have smiles, they're excited, they wanna share things. We build the connections here with my staff. I know what's going on with each and every one of them. We truly are a family, and that's why Madeira Beach is so wonderful.
Hi, Mrs. James, how are you? Mrs. James, we have all these kids and teachers here today because we are announcing that you are Pinellas County Schools' Principal of the Year. Congratulations!
My goodness, thank you so much!
Come on, we have to go for a walk. Let's go for a walk! We have some signs, we have some students. Look at all these. And down here at the end, we have some other special people. Who's there? Who's there? A school principal of the year, back in your home county. What does it feel like to represent Pinellas County?
Oh, my goodness, such an honor. I'm, I'm so shocked right now, I'm shaking, but truly, I work with the most amazing staff. They, they, the students, they make me look good, and, you know, they do the hard work, and so I appreciate them, and, you know, they just value every education and level up every day.
Well, your family's super excited to see you do this today, too. They've been hiding out, surprising you. What did you think to see them?
Oh, shocked, shocked. Olivia's missing that time right now.
It was great to celebrate the principal and assistant principal of the year. Congratulations to Christie James, two times in a row in A-School at Ponce de León Elementary School that for many years struggled to move its student achievement. And congratulations to Mrs. Crandall, who's done an amazing job at Madeira Beach Fundamental this last year. Her mom was there, a longtime principal in the district, and we were told that all of the confetti was biodegradable, so as it washes all over the place, that's what we were led to believe, we'll see. Moving on from that, today marks the beginning of the new quarter for the school year, second quarter. At the end of the first quarter was Fridays. Report cards will be distributed next week, and parents can see those both in their focus account and also printed at the schools next week. I want to thank the board, I know it's been a few weeks since our legislative delegation meetings, but we met twice with our legislative delegation, both once at St. Petersburg College and then once at Pinellas Technical College. Thank you, Mrs. Blacksburg, for your leadership with the legislative delegation and coordinating everything. I think it was a very successful opportunity to meet one-on-one and in small groups with our legislative delegation, and we appreciated their attention to detail and the questions that they asked, and I thought it were, both were productive. Ms. Edman mentioned already the Certificate of Distinction Breakfast. She brought greetings on behalf of the board yesterday where we honored eighty-two support employees for completing that Certificate of Distinction one and two. That was eighty-two for Certificate of Distinction one and twenty-seven for COD-two, including four employees who earned both last year, meaning that they did two hundred and fifteen hours of training outside of the workday to complete that. A few reminders for families, we have events coming up, the FASFA events, the Federal Student Aid Forum is now live, and we're encouraging seniors and their families to complete the application. The district has scheduled events at every high school in the district to help families with that. You can find more information on our website. And soon, our district application program fairs will begin, coming up on October twenty-fifth, at Pinellas Park High School on a Saturday, and then the South County one on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, at Gibbs High School, and North County Wednesday, November fifth, at Countryside High School. Families will receive an information and callouts to learn more about that, and there's information on our website. Also upcoming, on Tuesday, October twenty-first, at Palm Harbor University High School, will be the board's next listen and learn session, and this one will focus on athletics. We encourage the community to come out and learn more about Pinellas County athletics, but also board members and myself there to answer any questions about the district, not just on that theme, but any that we have, and we look forward to doing that at Palm Harbor. And finally, the superintendent standout this school board meeting is Tiffany Madison, a reading and literacy coach in the Transformation Zone, who's been with PCS for twenty-six years. She was recently recognized by a teacher and coach at one of our elementary schools as a true mentor, leader, and unwavering advocate for excellence. Her ability to go above and beyond her responsibilities is making a profound impact on school success. From working long hours to ensure every literacy piece is aligned and polished, to offering consistent support to teachers, her tireless effort has not gone unnoticed. Thank you, Mrs. Madison, for your passion for literacy and drive for making a difference in the lives of our students. Thank you so much to Mrs. Madison and all of our teachers, instructional coaches, and employees for the work they do each and every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Item nine point two, items introduced by the school board attorney.
I have no report today, thank you.
Thank you. Nine point three, items introduced by the board. Board members, Ms. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually want to speak to two things today. The first one's a little bit long, so, but I want to be very thorough here. So I think that everybody on our board, I can confidently say, everybody on our board and that works for our school district, has the health and well-being of every student and employee in our district in, in mind at all times, and actually in the forefront. We, we, at a recent board meeting, we had a parent bring, make us aware of a concern regarding a suspected mold substance in the culinary classrooms at Tarpon Springs High School. They have a culinary academy for anyone who is not aware, and anyone who hasn't been there, it's a huge kitchen space and also a dining room space. And this was the area of concern. So we received some emails, and then I also received some individual emails from this person, so I decided I wanted to go see this for myself. But I want to give, I actually reached out to our district staff first to get some information on the whole story, what, you know, what was done, what happened, what was done, and then, and then I went and visited. So I'm just going to give a summary up to that point. So the, the district, district operations team immediately conducted upon the, the air conditioning, oh, anybody who lives in Florida has experienced their air, air conditioning going out in their car, at work, at home, at school, any or any combination of any of those things. It's just the nature of living in a hot climate. I'm not belittling it happening at a school, it actually happened to my kids at school as well. It always happens in a really hot month, July, August, September, that's living in Florida. So it's, it's something that we expect, and I think acted very diligently in response to. So the district operations team did conduct air quality assessments through an external company and initiated remediation efforts immediately upon that. The efforts included deep cleaning by staff, HEPA air scrubbers, dehumidifiers were set up to operate alongside the air conditioning twenty-four-seven. Multiple air quality tests were conducted through, throughout to guide next steps for remediation. I'm trying to read this up without my glasses. Extensive HVAC upgrades include replacing ducts and vents and rebuilding a very large external air conditioning unit, which I saw, they're massive. The district continued to follow all recommendations made by the external company, and I really want to stress the fact that this was an external company that did our air quality checks. This was not just the school district. All spaces were cleared for use on August twenty-seventh based on the air quality assessment report. The report also noted that HVAC upgrades were necessary to prevent future issues. So we had additional upgrades to make, but the HVAC was functional and everybody was cleared to go back and operate in those spaces on August twenty-seventh. The district maintenance team began working with contractors to make the necessary HVAC upgrades, and while upgrades were being made, the district continued to monitor humidity levels, conduct external air quality assessments, and follow all recommendations outlined in the air quality assessment reports. And this is, just to highlight how big this, these units are, they had to bring in a crane to bring them from the parking lot over the buildings into the space where they, where they sit. So these are, these are massive units, this is not something like we have at our house. Following the HVA system upgrade installations, the external company conducted a final air quality assessment. The final report issued, was issued on September twenty-ninth, and it notes that based, it notes two things, I'm sorry. Based on visual inspection data collected, the investigator's professional opinion, no further action is recommended at this time. All remediation and cleaning efforts appear to have been performed professionally and per industry standards. Number two, this investigate, investigator include, concludes that the entire facility has met standard requirements of a successful PRV, I, I'm not going to read all these little acronyms and things, but basically the accepted standards for remediation and assessments within the indoor quality industry. Certainly, if anybody wants more detailed information, you can email us and we will provide it for you. The total cost for improvements to the HVAC system, this is just in the Culinary Academy building, correct, Ms. Dole? Okay. It was three, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents up to this point. Oh, additionally, the cost for initial testing and remediation verification testing to the external company for the culinary building at Tarpon Springs High School was seventy-five hundred dollars. Safety precautions that are, that are ongoing, the district worked, works diligently to guarantee the safety of students and staff. Students were temporarily, temporarily relocated to other classrooms and were not allowed in the kitchen areas until they were cleared to do so based on external assessments and reports. So last week, I wanted to go to the school after everything was completed and take a look for myself and smell it and stand in there and, and talk to our principal. Dr. Gonzalez accompanied me as well, which is never a bad day, wonderful people to spend time with. I personally visited the site last week to stand in the space. We were in there for probably a good forty-five minutes in, in the dining room and kitchen areas, and I didn't smell any mold, mildew, chemicals, I didn't feel anything in my lungs or anything negative. It, it smelled like it smelled a year and a half ago when I visited the area. And it was immaculate. You could, I mean, the kitchen was immaculate, it was immaculate before that, but they, they did an amazing job. You could not tell that anything different, you know, or unusual had happened, except for the new replacement of like the vents. You could see the, the, all the ceiling vents are brand new, there were, there was a lot of work done, and it was very evident. It was clean, it was fresh, it was, smelled like food, it was wonderful. The dining room looked great, they were actually preparing for their next dining event, which I understand they conduct once a month and have asked that our board is actually invited to attend one of those very soon. The, the independent reports do confirm that all remediation efforts were completed professionally, and they meet the standards, I just really want to stress that. And students and staff are, they're learning, they're back in those spaces, they have been for some time. I talked to a couple of staff members as well. It's, every, everything looks amazing. So I just, I want to thank our district for the work that they do every day to ensure that our schools are safe, that the ventilation systems are clean and healthy, and, and things are going to happen, but our district responds very quickly to those situations as they should, and things are, they're, they're going to happen. So specifically, though, I want to thank Principal Fatolitis, our COO, Jennifer Dole and her team for their quick response, all of the information that I was able to receive, and Dr. Gonzalez as well, just for all of their time and efforts and providing all this information. There was a lot more information, but that was actually just a summary. So thank you to everybody who, who brought this, and I just want to assure that our families, our, especially our students and our staff are, are just well taken care of. And I was proud to, to see that, so. And again, that was, it's always a good day to go to any of our schools, but go Spongers. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is in, actually, the video that we saw for diesel mechanics, my father-in-law was a diesel mechanic with Pinellas County Schools for over fifteen years and retired from that position. So my husband worked for Pinellas County Schools, my mother-in-law worked for Pinellas County Schools, I worked for Pinellas County Schools, and my daughters volunteered in Pinellas County Schools for their Bright Futures Scholarship Hours back at their middle school at Thurgood Marshall when they were in high school. So I'm very proud to, to serve in this district, and thank you to everybody who, who, I don't know, makes our district great. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Peters. Ms. Long?
Yes. A week ago yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to Countryside High School for the College and Career Fair. I've been going at least eight or nine years, and it was one of the biggest affairs that we have had. So many colleges, all the ranks of the military were there, our own Pinellas Technical College had a wonderful display. So I'd like to thank Kathleen Lamb, who is the one who puts it together, and of course, the principal, Taylor Henderson. It was an incredible night, and kids were asking questions, parents were engaged, and that's a good feeling. They have a place to go and research, and several people stopped me to say, wow, this is incredible, keep doing it, and you know they will, so thank you. And the other thing is that last Friday night, I'm, on my tour of high school football games in North County, I went to Countryside Homecoming. Boy, they came on strong, and unfortunately, right before halftime, things kind of slid down, but it was so much fun to watch them crown the king and the queen. I forgot what that was like, I don't remember that far back, but it was wonderful. And to see the kids, they were very well behaved. I liked how the student body cheered each other, they were really going at it, and because it's October breast cancer, more than half the kids were in total pink, including the guys. I thought that was awesome. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Mrs. Long. Ms. Edman?
And to highlight more football news, the JV championship game is going to be held at Lakewood High School this Friday, so I'm looking forward to going out there, oh, sorry, tomorrow. So, yep, that's the fifteenth, tomorrow. Thank you, Dr. Heinz. So I'll be there, celebrating with them. It's another great opportunity to be out and talk to people as well as see the excitement regarding or around sports. And last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the BayCare Practical Nursing Apprenticeship Penning Ceremony, and this was the first cohort to graduate of nine students, and actually the first time in history that this occurred. So it's our partnership with BayCare that allowed for BayCare employees who work full-time to earn their LPN or move towards earning their LPN in collaboration with PTC. So BayCare staff or directors were present and really appreciative of the partnership between Pinellas County Schools and Pinellas Technical College. So kudos to everyone that made that happen, and congratulations, class of two thousand twenty-five. And then last but not least, is just something that has made headlines and has a lot of people wondering what the district next steps would be regarding Schools of Hope. On September twenty-fourth, the State Board of Education approved an amendment to a rule addressing Schools of Hope, and those changes occurred due to Senate Bill twenty-five-ten passing during the two thousand twenty-five legislative session. And at a workshop, I asked about it, but during that time, the rule that the Department of Education approved September twenty-fourth wasn't in place. So it was clear that it would not impact us. I do want to just thank Superintendent Hendrick and staff for keeping the board informed regarding what's happening, and that we commit, continue to communicate with stakeholders on how things impact us, whether it's state legislative, Board of Education doing, or federal actions that impact us locally. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Edman. Ms. Blacksburg?
Thank you. Last week, I had the opportunity to sit down with the Student Rights and Responsibility Group, so it is student leaders from, throughout our high schools, with the help of Dr. Gonzalez and Mr. Mastaritis. And I will tell all of you, we as board members have the opportunity to sit with them, they meet once a month, and I will just say, bring your A-game, ladies. They were, they were not softball questions, and I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate how very engaged they were. They were not the normal sort of, we're upset about dress codes, or why can't we have our phones? They were very in-depth questions. Ms. Dole, you will be getting an invitation to talk about all of the ongoings of, of your department. So it was, it was wonderful to meet with them. I was looking forward to having the opportunity to ask them questions. Unfortunately, they asked so many of us that we ran out of time, but again, just such a great group of, of young people who were very engaged and very interested in learning about the ongoings of, of our district. So again, study up, so. They're not easy questions, so thank you to Dr. Gonzalez and Mr. Mastaritis for answering where I had some trouble filling in.
Thank you, Ms. Blacksburg. I appreciate hearing from so many school board members this morning. I did want to- I did want to say thanks to Mrs. Peters for that in-depth report around Tarpon Springs High School, really. I mean, because when, like you said at the top of your remarks, that the health and wellbeing of our students is top of mind. And so when someone brings a concern to us about indoor air quality, we all think of our own kids, plus the other kids, and we worry about that. And so for you to go and investigate and come back and explain to everybody, hey, I heard that, it was a concern and I wanted to find out more about it, I just really appreciate you taking that time and also reaffirming for people that this is where we are, these are our process. Because I too, when I first, you know, I joined, you start asking all these questions and then you realize, wow, we have quite a system, even more importantly, quite people in place that care about this and care about our kids and want to make sure they're in a healthy environment. So thank you for doing that. Any other comments? Okay. Ms. Edmund?
Yes. I know that the Board of Directors meeting occurred with Florida School Board Association. If possible, could the Board receive a report? And I believe there's pending travel. So if board members can share with us what they learned or bring any documents back, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
There is, I got an email this morning from FSBA that they asked for the school board chairs who were, who received letters regarding the Schools of Hope to participate in a phone call on Thursday morning. And I am able to do that and I will do that. And I will share information and discussion about that. And I know our workshop is this coming Tuesday and we have a workshop topic request process that we follow. All of this is relatively recent news, but we might want to consider being prepared to discuss that, whether it's in our leadership discussion or whatnot, a little more thoroughly on Tuesday. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Review of board requests. Mrs. Woodford?
Yes, I noted that you requested from your colleagues, updates on reports from meetings they may have attended, also update on travel details as well as potentially an update on Schools of Hope from staff.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn today's meeting. Thank you for being here today and we'll move to public participation. Mrs. Hauck, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick, we have four speakers this morning.
Excellent. Please go ahead and call them.
Okay. The first two are Nicholas Samulov and Lee Bryant.
There's two different microphones, so if you just come to one and then you'll go, Mr. Sabalov, I think, and you are, sir.
Thank you. First of all, can I just say how impressed I am with all of you up here? I've never been to a school board meeting and I'm really impressed. Everybody was real friendly here and you're all about business and I like that in you. You're way more formal than I. I probably should have wore a suit, but anyway, I came today to read a letter. I don't want to praise you for three minutes. In this letter, I wrote to our superintendent I see up here. I didn't know you would be here either. But anyway, I wanted to read it just for the public record and here goes. Dear Superintendent Hendrick, I'm writing to you today in hopes you will address the concern of mine. On September 12th, 25, a letter addressed to you was posted on State Representative Bernie Jacques's Facebook account. This letter referred to a teacher at Starkey Elementary, an apparent post the teacher made regarding the murder of Mr. Charlie Kirk. One comment which seemed particularly irksome to the representative was "good riddance." Representative Jacques was offended by the teacher's comments and trusted that the teacher would be terminated. I am a strong proponent of a person's right to speak, whether I agree with it or not. I may not be an expert on the agreement that the teacher has with the district regarding her free speech rights, but I would hope the teacher is not terminated for her comments. I would like to point out that our representative himself has posted comments on social media that sadly mimicked the comments the teacher made when talking about other murdered individuals. On April 12th, 25, Representative Jacques posted "good onward" with the story about an inmate's upcoming execution here in Florida. On June 1st, 25, Representative Jacques posted "death penalty ASAP regarding a man accused of assaulting a child." On May 23rd, Representative Jacques posted "what this criminal did was truly evil and vile, looking forward to his execution." On February 1st, 25, Representative Jacques even posted this after an inmate in Florida was executed. His post, "good riddance." I know Representative Jacques likes to visit and talk to the children in Pinellas County Schools often. I would like to know what you think as I do, I would like to know if you think as I do that the representative's social media posts are as abhorrent and unbecoming as the representative claimed in his letter that the teachers were. And if such posts make it unacceptable for Representative Jacques to be invited back into any of Pinellas County's schools. I appreciate your time and look forward to your response. Sincerely, Nicholas Samulov.
Thank you.
No, sir, that's the end of your time.
Good morning, Chair Heinz, Superintendent Hendrick, School Board and Staff. My name is Lee Bryant. I'm the president of the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association. First, I'd like to thank my bargaining team and our office staff for all their work on the contract that we just ratified. 65.1% said yes of the voters, 38, 34.8% said no, and one person took a ballot that didn't market. I'm not sure. While I'm glad that the contract is finished for this year, we have another contract coming up next year. Always have something. It's, this year was the open book. And I'm happy with a lot of the language that we got in our book. This is the best contract we've had in Pinellas County in my 30 years. So I'm very happy with what we have. But the pay, and you know it too. In Florida, teachers earn 78 cents for every dollar earned by professionals with a similar background, similar degrees. 12.9% loss of purchasing power from inflation over the past 10 years. Teachers are working for less money every year. And they have high expectations from society, from their administrators and themselves. Educators feel like if they're not exhausted by the end of the day, they didn't do enough. If they are not totally spent by the end of the week, they didn't do enough. And the reward for this from the state of Florida? More standards, more testing, higher expectations, and 50th in the nation in pay again. We didn't go into education to get wealthy, but we also didn't go into education thinking we'd not be able to pay our mortgage or pay our rent. Or to be able to afford to send our kids to college while we work to make students that our students are ready for life after school. U.S. News said Florida's number one in growth and has the sixth best economy in America, but the state teacher increase for salaries this year was 0.7%, less than $10 a week before taxes. The educators of Florida are getting to the breaking point, which is the plan from some lawmakers. By underfunding our schools and underpaying the workers in the schools, they want to break us and use education as a profit-making entity. $153 million in Pinellas County going to empowerment scholarships. This system relies on teachers working hour after hour after hour to keep it afloat. But the educators of Florida are reaching the breaking point. If the teachers of Florida started working their contract hours, this system would fail and none of us want that. Thank you for your time.
The next two speakers are Sally Coleman and Barbara DuMichele.
Good morning. Thank you, and I believe. Florida families want safe, strong schools. The taxpayers call for accountability and value. This is nothing new. Have the lawmakers heard and responded to our voices? Yes, they have. They have responded withholding back grants. Teachers are in the very lowest ranking of pay and they've systematically cut back and eliminated critical programs that are crucial to the true and well-rounded education needed for a thriving generation and for generations to come. Have they responded to the call of the needy and impoverished and disabled? Yes, they have. They have shut down entire departments, fired the passionate and skilled trainers and educators, and closing the door to opportunities of community assistance and interaction. Have they responded to our call for building upon programs for the exceptional? Well, we can start by witnessing control of library resources and history restrictions. We can also see the cracking of the IBAP and dual enrollment programs. These are the evidences of their actions. Where are we going from here? As I understand it, we will soon be co-locating with a number of schools, with a number of co-location with the number of Hope Schools in Pinellas. Our taxpayer dollars that have already been subverted to voucher programs will now be layered with responsibility for the everyday existence of these charter schools within our public school buildings. This is all at our expense and inconvenience. What is the accountability for this glorious privilege? There's astoundingly little. The state has already experimented with charters to an embarrassing C and D rankings, yet funding is bottomless. You know, as a single mom and as a grandmother of two children who used and depended upon the Florida public school system to provide a solid education, I can say that they thrived and are now fighting for the life of the system that prepared them for their futures. The act of dismantling of this very system is short-sighted and completely non-inclusive. Lawmakers' actions are depriving our children, all of them, of a solid, well-rounded education. We have to change this.
Hi, I'm Barbara DuMichele. I can't believe you pronounced my name right, whoever did that, but that was good. I'm just here as a grandmother and a parent. My whole family's been in education my entire lifetime. My dad was superintendent of schools, retired as a professor at University of Tampa. And as you know, or you might not, but I was here before speaking about pornography in the school libraries. So I was just wondering how many books are now, has this topic been resolved? How many books and the titles of those books, if I could be supplied with that, are still in our school libraries, you know, from kindergarten to 12th grade? This is so horrific as, it's just hard to even speak about. So I guess I'll go to my notes. First of all, I would just like to request approval, if not already resolved, that all books centered on containing pornography, which is so abhorrent, blatant pornography in the school. I mean, some parents read it and you denied their reading of it in this room, but yeah, it's available on the school shelves, library shelves. So I'd like to request approval for psychiatric help and support to any child or student affected negatively by being exposed to the concept that sexual relationship between a man and a woman as a giving of love to one another, to unite in love, giving birth to life versus what pornography is, which is being exposed to a concept that sex is selfish for pleasure, you know, and proven to produce hurt, anger, hate, the opposite of love. And so many, I mean, I think millions across our country are in counseling, psychiatric counseling as adults for this. And so many, probably thousands and millions of marriages have been divorced in divorce court because of it. And you know that's a fact. I mean, we don't have to have that as an even discussion. So why is it on the shelves of our children? I really, I'm not here to attack you as a person, your personhood, you know, at all. I'm just here to have a debate, as Charlie Kirk would, an honest and open debate, that this is just unacceptable. My dad died at 100 this year and he found out about this because I told him and he was appalled. He was appalled. He couldn't even believe it. He said, no, that's not happening. I said, yeah, Dad. He said, please do something about it. So here I am again, but I'm not here for my dad. I'm here for the children.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Thank you and thank you for being here today, everyone.